At this time, we'll call to regular meeting in New Ulm City Council for Tuesday, September 1st at 4:30 PM, order. First item on the agenda is public notice for teleconference. We have everybody present, so we don't need to do that. We'll go on to item number two, consent agenda items. What's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any?
I just have a question. Maybe Chris can give us an update. Somebody had reached out and asked about the mall. And I see that you've had some conversation there with the county. If you can maybe educate the public, what's the latest update on that?
Council President, councilors, the current update on the mall right now is that it has gone back and started over at zero. So the mall itself, potentially the correct paperwork wasn't filed by the county, so it has to go through the tax forfeit, uh, tax forfeiture process again. So that essentially has started, started over and it'll be anywhere from 90 days to about seven months before something can happen, because there'll be another 60-day grace period. And then the IRS after that grace period has 120 days to respond whether or not they want to do anything with that property or put a lien, um, put a lien against it, so, or forgive it. So we're looking early, early next year before anything can really, potentially early next year before anything can be finalized on, on the mall moving forward. But the developer is still interested in the property, is willing to wait it out, but they just wanted to ensure that all the liens were taken care of before any transaction went through.
Thank you, Chris, for the update.
Any other questions? CNN, hold on, please, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, motion carries. Item number three, public hearing on the final assessment rolls for the 2019 MSAS improvement project. Joe?
All right, thank you, Mr. President, city councilors. This public hearing will be for the 2019 MSAS improvement, improvement project, which would be 5th North Street from Garden Street to North Highland Avenue. Notices were sent according to state statutes, and I have not received any emails or phone calls in my office concerning this.
Well, we did receive one in the office, but all they were just, um, inquiring about a hardship referral.
Okay.
And we went through the requirements, and they didn't qualify.
So, other than that inquiry, we haven't received anything else to date. It would be my recommendation that we open up for public hearing and proceed in that fashion.
Thank you, Joe. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to be heard on it? Is there anybody in the hall or anybody out there that would like to be heard?
Just staff. Just staff out in the hallway.
But we do have folks in the audience. Anyone want to speak on the 5th North, uh, 5th North Street from Garden Street to North Highland? Nope, must be here for something else.
Not entertain a motion, close public hearing. I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, closing the public hearing and adopting the final assessment role for the 2019 MSAS improvement project payable over 10-year, period along with a 3.40 simple interest charge on the unpaid balance.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? CNN, Finance Director, please call to roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 4.1, lawful gambling permit for the dear Deuches Longbeards.
I'll offer the motion.
February 6th, 2021. Go ahead.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? That'd be at the country club, like I say, February 6th, 2021. CNN, hold on, please, say aye.
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 No, motion carries. Item number five, Andrew and Nancy.
Lilian.
Lilian, variance application. And that's for 1301 and 1305, South Broadway.
Good evening. Good evening. The Planning Commission at its July 30th, 2020 meeting had originally tabled this variance request to allow the applicant more time to consider different options for the size of the signs that are being proposed and be able to consult with the corporate office of Taco John's for other options for these signage, for this signage. The Planning Commission at that meeting also directed city staff to review other various communities throughout Minnesota to take a look at their sign requirements and how they calculate signed surface area. And both the applicant's options for sizes of the sign and the report on other cities are in the packets in the council agenda. So staff was in communication with, with the applicant regarding this request between meetings. It was at that time that there were two additional signs located on the property that were not included in the original sign permit application to the city. And so that signage wasn't in the variance request that was originally requested and considered by the Planning Commission. But for their variance request, they requested a total variance of 44 square feet above the allowed 200 square feet for that property. Those signs would read bigger, better, bolder, and those signs have also not been installed yet. So the total square footage of sign area on that property with those two new signs would have been 244 square feet. But with the additional two signs that, that weren't submitted, it would add an additional 22 and a half square feet to the property, bringing the total to approximately 258 and a half square feet and increase the signage amount on that property roughly 23%. The two signs that weren't included in the application were a smaller, bigger, better, bolder sign that is located above the drive-through window and then scrolling reader sign that is located on the pylon pole that's right on Broadway. So because the variance request was actually for just 44 square feet, those additional two signs would be required to get an additional variance from the city. And the applicant was made aware of that at the last Planning Commission meeting and plans on going forward with a variance application shortly. So there were two pro, uh, two proposed conditions for this variance. One, that the applicant shall contact the city building official once all signage on the property is installed to verify compliance with the variance amount granted. And then, two, any additional signage on the property above 244 square feet would require the applicant to apply for another variance from the city. So I am, I'm willing to take questions. The applicant is also present here and can be addressed.
Thank you, John.
I'm just going to add from the Planning Commission, you know, recommended approval of this variance. And I voiced my concern of it, you know, that I felt it was a unique situation because it's only 100. We base it, the signage, if you read in your packet, for every 50 feet, you know, there's two lots, so you have 100 feet, times two, you'd have 200 square feet of signage. And I felt, you know, it's a unique remodel of an existing building. And if you were going to say build a brand-new building like that, you probably are going to have more lotage and then you would have your signage there. That's how I took it as being a unique, because you would have to acquire enough parking and everything for a new construction. You would probably need a bigger lot. And I think it looks complimentary. And I think also in the last 20 years, the pig-style, uh, lettering has been relatively new to the New Ulm community for signage in those aspects. Those are some comments from the zoning meeting last week.
That's kind of where my question was going is, is, are we keeping up with the size of signs overall, um, in the business world?
Well, if you look in your packet, we're just going by length, by width.
Yep.
Keeping it easier. We could go down and take out the, the non-letter and then it would fall under, you know, the category.
Yeah, I'm just questioning if our.
Your, the, your current ordinance?
Yeah, the ordinance. Is the ordinance maybe out of date?
Our ordinance is 50 years old. We did ask.
That answers my question.
We, we did table this back in July, and when we, we asked the, the Dave and John to come back with some more information for the August meeting, and we checked with eight other cities, is that correct, John?
Yep.
Eight other cities, and six of them would allow this. And two of them would not fall into the category.
Without a variance.
Correct. So that's another reason we felt we were not in the norm. And we did go back to the, to the owners of the property and ask them if they checked with their franchise and everything else, those capacities, you know, and every store is, how he explained it, is very unique, you know, and, and is there existing and retrofitted to, you know, those structures. So, but it does, it does set precedence for the future going forward for signage.
It does.
You know, and I felt it would be complimentary personally, because it's not a backlit sign or anything, it's not illuminated. But, you know, you, you know, we did actually check in the two other cities. Some cities, uh, figure a franchise could be color of a, of a building. Right, John?
Correct.
From the information that we were stating, you know, because it's identifiable when you're going through, oh, there's a Taco John's, or there's, you know, things of that nature, so. But, you know, we're going to have this back in a month again.
Yep.
Just, you know, in the September.
But this, but this one needs to be approved tonight because of the deadline with the 60 days, yeah.
Because of the deadline. You got a 60-day deadline.
I have no problem approving it. I just wonder if we need to kick this to our wonderful city attorney and have him take a look at maybe some updates and, or get some feedback from us and then potentially some updates, but.
I'm not opposed to it either. I do have one question. It's been years since I know staff has done it. John, have we lately gone out, what other cities, how many variance applications do they approve or get submitted to them? Just curious.
So we, we did that with a few of the communities who we were on the phone with and spoke with them about their sign ordinances. Some communities don't give out variances at all. For instance, when we talked to St. Peter, their, their community development director gave out one variance in the last 19 years that they were in charge. But I did want to just point out one, point of clarification, as far as the way we measure signs or the way we figure out the square footage of the surface area of the sign, our way of doing that length times width is not necessarily unique. That, what Counselor Mack was addressing was the total square footage of allowed signage area in those communities. Six of those eight communities would allow, allow larger, two communities would allow our size or less. But as far as the way they're measuring, some, I would say it's split roughly half and half. Some count that blank, blank space, maybe above a letter or between a letter, and some don't. I think the way we're looking at it is if, if there was an applicant applying for a sign permit, one of the easiest ways for them to figure out the total square footage of the area that they have would just be by making it simple, length times width.
Well, let's deal with this issue in front of us. I'm going to go ahead and offer a motion to approve the two, approve with two conditions, the application by Andrew and Nancy Lilian requesting a variance to allow an additional 22 square foot per sign, 40, which is 44 square feet total on property located at 1301 and 1305, South Broadway.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I would just recommend that we put this on our to-do list, take a look at this ordinance.
That's good. It's not a motion.
Roger.
Not part of my motion.
President, members of the council, I've spoken with John about the way in which staff has been interpreting our ordinance, and I agree with him. As written, I think they're calculating the area the correct way. For a variance of this type, I think in the past, the council has looked closely at what any particular franchise wants for their franchisee. And franchises understand that this is up to the individual city. And there, if the city says, no, we aren't going to allow something that large, they will have to adapt. I think you have to have in mind the precedent of this. I'm not sure what the criteria is for the next person who comes around and wants a variance. I mean, at what point is a sign too big? We've got requirements and many people are supposed to comply with them. And I don't know if any of the owners checked with the city before they've got these signs or if they just went ahead and got them and now we're looking for the variance, but.
Well, we even got in discussions about neon signs. If you remember the sign that's up on the Center Street Hill, there was discussion about would that be distracting going up the hill and ended up working out fine, but we had a council, pretty strong discussion on, back in those days as well, too. So, yeah, you're right, it's going to have to be some, some research done and recommendations from staff and see if we can get that updated.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Do we get a second?
Yes.
Yes. CNN, hold on, please, say aye.
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 No, motion carries. Item 5.2 from Rick and Rachel Risen, variance request, and that's for side yard setback.
The applicant is, Rachel and Rick Risen are requesting a variance to place a 10 by 12 detached storage shed 1.5 feet from the side property line, which would be the east property line here, rather than the required 10-foot side yard setback in that zoning district. The Planning Commission at its last meeting on August 27th, 2020, did recommend approval with one condition, that the applicant locate the property lines prior to placing the building. I should note that staff went out on Monday and located three of the property pins for this property. It would be the northwest, the southeast, and the southwest corners. We located all those property pins, triangulated, and were able to get a really good idea of where those property lines are located. But we would, when we were on site, there is a window on the existing detached garage that faces to the east. And where they are proposing to put the shed currently blocks a portion of that window. So talking with the city building official, we would like a condition be placed on this variance request, that that new 10 by 12 storage shed be moved three feet at least closer to Second Street South, so we are not any longer going to be blocking that window for that site. And then lastly, we did receive a concern regarding this, regarding this request. I believe the council did as well. The applicant is here and will address your questions as well.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
John, does this have to come back then for the, for the side yard setback then? If you're going to have to move three feet, we're, we're okay there?
No, it would still meet, it would still meet the setback from Second Street South. It wouldn't be moving any closer to that side yard setback, so it'd still be at one and a half feet.
And neighbors are notified when this happens, correct?
In variance requests, the neighbors are not notified. We have a public hearing notice that's in the newspaper. Notifications for neighbors within 350 feet go out with our conditional use permits.
We heard from the one neighbor.
We did hear from the one neighbor, yes.
Who are opposed to this.
Correct.
Yes.
Do you want to maybe give the council a little brief history that, you know, that's why the window and it's for, because of the, there's residents there and.
Sure. So for a little bit of background, this property is actually located in a B1 service business district. So although it looks like a residential neighborhood and there are residences all up and, up and down State Street at this location, its zoning is a B1 service business district, which does allow multifamily housing in that district. So what has happened on this property is there is a house facing State Street, a family lives in there, and then there is a garage adjacent to that house and another family lives in there. So that is how that, that was brought up to us. Unfortunately, that is more or less, it's kind of a separate issue from the variance request in itself. And city staff has been working with those families and making sure all those issues with fire safety and things like that are all addressed.
And that would be the concern with the window for an escape?
Yes.
And for the fire barrier.
Exactly. Yes.
Well, John, you want to touch on a little why it gets so complicated? I know all the councilors are aware of this garage being used as a residence, but since it is in a B1 zone, it gets a little gray with, can you do that? Can you not do that? What we're allowing the B1, I mean, a simple fix to it, they attached a breezeway from the house to the garage, it's not an issue. It's.
So in the, in the B1 zoning, in our B1 district, in our zoning code, under permitted uses, it references uses in the R3 district, which would be as, as permitted, which would be multifamily housing in that district. So the city has been in contact and confirmed this with the city attorney prior to this variance ever, ever coming to the city for that to be allowed in that zoning district. Am I correct with that?
And one other question to touch on, we had discussed that in your office. Okay, the front yard setback, I know they have a potential other location, did you ever get the answer about the old method of running from one corner of the house to the other corner of the house if that accessory structure could sit there?
So on the, on the second south side, yes, that's the, that's the measurements we would be using to determine the front yard setback.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you. Any more questions?
And, you know, just so the rest of the council knows, we have done reduced side yard setbacks. We did one earlier this year with the insurance office on North Broadway with, that would be the State Farm office for, for accessory shed.
Thank you.
One other, one other question. At, at the Planning Commission meeting, and I know they listened to a lot of data on it, okay, the garage is not being used technically as a garage. Could that storage shed sit right in front of that 16-foot garage door?
Yes.
It could.
Yep.
But that's not what the owners want.
Well, it would, it can sit there, but at the same time, since we have a residence, they have to have off-street parking. So that all would have to be factored into it. It would have to be at a location where they would still be able to have parking on that, on that site.
I, granted, I get that, but you're allowed to pour concrete to the property line. I see green space there, there could probably be two more parking spaces. I got a hard time with this one because of the situation, the housing, all of.
Well, and, you know, one of the things, questions that was brought up at the zoning meeting, you know, is why do you need the shed? Well, because you can't put anything in the garage.
Ah.
And now you're granting it.
I don't like it either.
And then, you know, I did go out and met with one of the neighbors on Saturday afternoon, you know, and concerned about things being, items being tarped and things of that nature. And then he said that John reached out with them on Friday afternoon and, you know, he was okay with it, but he wanted to make sure that the pins were located and things were going to be in the shed, you know, because now it stands outside everything.
Well, Mr. President?
Yes.
Just briefly, of course, this is a council decision in your discretion, but I think you, you have to keep in mind the legal standard for granting a variance. And there has to be generally something, some circumstances unique to the property that require it. And I don't know that the owner's desire to put up any particular-sized building, what if he wanted to put up a 30 by 30-foot shed? You know, that's not the legal standard. That's not what you're supposed to be using to gauge your decision here. If there was something about the topography of the land or some, you know, if part of it was a cliff or whatever, it was isolated in a district, but here you've already got some intensive use with two dwellings located on it, and now we're going to add this because the owner has decided to use a garage as a dwelling.
I, I agree with Rob. I just have a hard time with it. There's a couple other options. I know this, it's not raw garbage in the front, in the side yard. I mean, it's things that you and I would just take out of our garage and leave sit on the driveway. I, I can't support it. I don't see a hardship or meeting our criteria. I mean, I respect the decision of the Planning Commission, but being in that B1 zone and what we have to do?
I too have a, a hard time with it because I don't see the extenuating, extenuating circumstances for having it. Then anybody should be able to come and get a variance.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, how could we deny any other one?
The property was originally designed, designed as a single-family residence with a garage. Now we're making it a multi-residence.
Well, I mean, well, that's permitted technically in the B1.
Right.
I mean, we could sit here and the pro and con for, I'll take a stab at it, I'll be the bad guy. I'm going to, a motion to deny the application of Rick Risen requesting a variance to reduce the side yard setback from 10 feet to 1.5 feet for the construction. the construction of a ten-by-twelve detached storage shed.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See a nun? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no. Motion carries. We've got item number, let's see again, six, new old business, stormwater report for the new industrial park area. Dave?
Thank you. The city council, back February fifth, twenty-nineteen, approved a contract with Bolton &amp; Mink Incorporated to conduct this particular report. The project area that they looked at consisted of two parts. The first part was a forty-five-acre tract of land that the city had purchased for the expansion of our industrial park. And the second part that they looked at was a five-hundred-and-thirty-acre piece of land that consisted of the watershed that the city's industrial park property drained into, as well as then areas to the west, north, and east. And there's a map of that in the report that you received. Okay, Joe is showing it there. So, the outside boundary, what you see in red, is that five-hundred-and-thirty-acre area. Now, the purpose of the report was to determine the effects of taking that watershed from primarily an agricultural use to an industrial use. And industrial use is what the area is designated for in our comprehensive plan, as far as our comprehensive plan takes land uses. So, the report provides information on that transition. Appendix A provides you with this map, as well as a variety of other maps for the study area. And then Appendix D provides you with a utility and street layout map for the industrial park property only. And so, that's what's on your screen at this time. Now, what this report does is it gives us, at least at this point in time, you know, a future development plan for this area of the community. Under the budgetary financial issues section, you will note that, you know, there's, or if you look in the report, you'll find some fairly hefty dollar figures for these improvements. And the development of the industrial park property, the city's property alone, is three-point-seven million dollars. So, that would take you to a fully improved site with streets and utilities. In that cost, about a half a million of that is for stormwater drainage, you know, a pond. To treat all of the water within the watershed, or the study area that we talked about, that five-hundred-and-thirty acres, that's one-point-seven million dollars. And there's four different ponds that have been cited. Now, obviously, given how development takes place in New Ulm, there's probably a fair amount of time to prepare, at least for the larger area. As far as the industrial park is concerned, you know, it may warrant the council starting to think about maybe putting some money aside to facilitate the development of that area. So, Joe and myself are available to respond to any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Joe?
I think your comments are right on. I think we need to plan for the future and get some money set aside to make sure that we have industrial parks area that people want to move to our community to start a business. And if it's just a plot of dirt, some people are maybe okay with that, then they can build to how they want it to be. But other people kind of want that street done, and the water done, and electricity done. And so, and what was that number, three-point-seven?
Yeah. No, that's a larger area.
That's a larger area.
Start with the small ones first.
Let's do the small one first.
And I will note that we currently have, I think, four lots left in the current industrial park to be able to absorb, you know, any demand that there might be for land for industrial purposes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the report.
I suppose we need a motion to receive and order filed? Motion to receive and order filed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no. Motion carries. Item number seven-point-one, a request for proposals on North Highland Avenue and North Broadway. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. President, city councilors. Bringing to you today a request for proposals for engineering design services for a project slated for twenty-twenty-three. Will be a mill and overlay of North Highland Avenue from Oak Street to Trunk Highway fourteen, along with North Broadway from Twentieth North Street out to the north city limits. We applied for and received a federal grant of approximately, I didn't total it, about nine-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars for this project, and any funds over that will be paid using state aid funds. With the federal project, there's a lot of additional paperwork that goes along with projects of that type, and along with federal project memorandums and things of that nature. So, the workload to deliver this project is pretty extensive to get through all the review process and everything like that. So, that's the purpose for the request today. And then, right now, there's no budgetary impacts, but after review of the proposals, we would bring that back for final approval by the city council.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions?
Twenty-twenty-one, you'll be back. I mean, it doesn't happen that fast, right, Joe?
Oh, we would get them probably under contract prior, let's see my schedule. We would select a consultant December fifteenth, and then they would begin work in twenty, early twenty-twenty-one, on the early portions of it, like the project memorandums and things of that nature. The timeline's pretty forgiving. It's for the project of this type. They probably don't need all that time, but it gives us some fluff to work, as far as project delivery is concerned.
So, we're notified now already that we have that nine-hundred thousand, but we wouldn't be expending it. So, do we, do we have the money? Do we get the money? Do they wait until we pay the bills, and then they reimburse us?
That's correct, councilor Schultz. Yep.
So, this North Highland Avenue road is in my ward, and I get very frustrated with this road, as Joe knows and his predecessor knows. It's my favorite worst road in my ward, because it's not a bad street. I mean, it's really not broken up much at all yet. But it's the manhole covers that just drive me insane on that street. It's like, if you want to not get bumpity-bump, you got to drive like through a minefield to avoid them all. And so, I don't know who was on that project previously, but I hope we don't have that person again.
Well, I don't think that was, that was due to long-term settlement of the utility trenches. So, this would just be...
Yes and no. You can say that, but the person who, or the people that were in charge that fixed that did a terrible job. And I'll just say, it was a terrible job. It was, the manhole sunk, and it was like, people just, I describe it as pouring a bucket of tar around the manhole cover, because you're just up and down. There's not smoothed out at all. And it's just my pet peeve street that I just dislike. But I'm really hoping two thousand twenty-three comes fast, so we get that fixed.
But if we authorize a request for proposals to deliver the North Highland Avenue and North Broadway Mill and Overlay project?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no. Motion carries.
I feel better now. I feel better. I vented.
Keith Burford vacate easement area. And that's at twenty-five Village Lane, twenty-one and twenty-five, sorry.
Okay. Mr. Freeworth is the owner of two lots. Those lots are separated by an easement area that is ten feet wide, so it's five feet on each side of the property line. He would like to construct a garage over that property line. That is something that we allow. But in order to do so, the easement areas need to be vacated. And this is something that the city council has done in the past. It's been a practice with the plating of property, I would say, over the past twenty years, to put easement areas all the way around the lot. And when you have two lots, and you want to build over a property line, you run into this problem. There is one condition, and that is that the applicant would record the resolution with the Brown County Recorder's Office.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, approving the request of Keith Freeworth to vacate the easement area between twenty-one and twenty-five Village Avenue, or Village Lane, with conditions.
Second. We have a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See a nun? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Councilor Fisher?
Yes.
Councilor Mack?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, motion carries. Item eight-point-one, reported claims paid, except a list of claims paid, amount of four million, one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, or four-hundred-and-ninety dollars and eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? See a nun? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no. Motion carries. With no more business, meeting adjourned.